Ladies and gentlemen, and everyone at home, we'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we begin, can we all rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Obviously Chairman Nato was up tonight, so I will be filling in for him. We do have the forum with the three of us here, so we will begin. Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to it the application for liquor licenses out to our beds.
Okay, you want to go 5A on that?
The chairman of the chair, Sir Kirk, wants to go 5A.
From there. Alright, thank you. Any further amendments? Okay, let's go with the report from the fire chief is up first tonight?
I hope everyone noticed the flags that are up on the poles. That was taken upon Keith Russell, and I think really took it upon himself. So I'll play a long time number in the fire department, but he really did it on his own. Again, no parade, but we are sending one again to Freeport, so one bumper truck. Recently, I completed on the emergency management side, a three weeks, three day threat and hazard identification and risk assessment through Anderson County. It helps to play well with others. It helped me understand, you know, the river, everything from... Again, there's another school shooting in the news tonight, so anything from threats like that to flooding, to winter weather, to ice storms, that type of stuff. Also, we'll be on the hook for getting some local grants, so... They seem to do a lot better when you're a team player and you sort of participate over there. This is very important. We just finished up EMS week, and one of our EMTs was actually nominated and received EMT of the Year for the American Legion. So Lieutenant Joe Lamont through the Legion, I think there was 143 posts or something in the state, and he's going to be EMT of the Year. So June 11th, I'll be traveling to Brewer, I believe, for his convention to represent us. Certainly a proud moment for Durham Fire, a longtime member.
That's awesome.
And fantastic. At Acostas, I sent a member recently to a grant writing class, two-day class. He's writing a roughly quarter million dollar grant for our radios. So that doesn't open until October, and then it's like a six-month window, you know, the AFG grant from the federal FEMA side. But it really helped him, so, which helps us, and he's going to practice on the smaller brands. As I've told you before, grants always just a cycle of open and close and pending and whatnot, and I'll let you know what we applied for, but he is already putting together, it's about 40 hours worth of work to put one of these grants together. Again, roughly 250,000 or 300,000 for a full radio system. So we're hoping to get that. I've been working closer with the planning board and doing the walkthroughs. I just got the latest, so it was nice to get an invitation by the board. We started a house numbering program. Recently, we had a difficulty on EMS call trying to find the house, so we invested pub head money into house numbering. So if we find that scenario, we just ask permission to put four-inch house numbers out front. So if you know of anything or anyone ever calls, we can do that for them. And finally, and we had a long discussion on diesel and gas prices, so I read through our numbers, and the basic numbers are, we're just a smaller version of Public Works in Calvin. So we budget for $4,400 a year on our call volume. Last year, out of $4,400, we spent $4,000, so we're pretty close. And we didn't have a contract, so it was just whatever the going rate was. Sometimes it was two, sometimes it was three, you know, it's up to four. So out of the $4,400, this year, first quarter, we've spent $3,000. So we're on pace for $12,000, $9,000 to $12,000. I've talked to Mitch about it. I don't know if we can absorb that. We have put in stopgap measures, you know, training and, you know, keeping the engines and the bigger trucks off the roads really, except for calls. So unless you have another idea, we are getting to the contract with Calvin, sort of mirroring that, Janet taught us, keeping our costs down. But Mitch has been aware of it, and that's where we stand with that. That's it. Any questions? Super, I'll take it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Road Commissioner?
I warmed up, I woke up the crowd. So we, uh, the last few weeks, we've been working on the town properties, getting them ready. And as we took out the dividers and urinals and painted those and covered the roster. We've been doing a lot of stuff like that. We rebuilt the salt ship door in the back of the building. We started changing driveway corners, hitching. Went down on Sand Hill today, wrapped that up, and we were doing a dig just to go to pick up some trees that CMP left on, some of those swamps that are about three, four feet across, that they couldn't figure out what to do with, so we had to go and pick those up. Because I had not the tree I thought I'd run anyway, so if they're in the right way, we won't pick them up. We, uh, so I got the, uh, in this, uh, the third item here is, uh, I got, we, we got the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, that's about that tech, and, uh...
Are they always?
So last year, there were some significant changes, which is why we didn't get the covets in. Last year, because of the new DEP required out of the Army Corps requirements, they changed the stream crossings to significant salmon habitat, and Army Corps got much more involved in the process with... So unlike the last ones that we put in, which were, and ones we didn't power, ones we did here, these years, they didn't accept, and we had to step back and redesign everything. They wanted stream shots, elevation shots, way upstream, way downstream, to see if the stream bed was actually where it should be, or if it was, or if it had, or if it was a product of impropriety. Installed covets in the past, that was why we had... So they, they want to restore the actual stream bed to where it should be, and they want 20% capacity of both the top of the plate for debris to fit through, and there were all kinds of requirements. So, um, and if you look at this email, or if you have this, this email?
Yeah.
This explains from the engineer what happened, and the way we're at, how we got here. So I got a live write, write something last night, and, uh... So essentially, it is this, that one of the projects was permitted by the Army Corps of Engineers. The other, this is the one on the swamp road. The one on Quaker Media House Road did not get completed. To finish that and make it fit the criteria for Army Corps of Engineers, actually, that's going to turn into a bridge, because it'll be over 20 feet long. And when you hit 20 feet, the DOP classifies a bridge. It has to be numbered with the state, it has to be inspected every two years, and, uh... This one's a just under a bridge at 18.5 feet, but the other one would be over 20. But to make this work, we had to change it from an arched plate to concrete abutments and concrete slabs across the top. Much better product, but, uh, and, you know, will last a lot longer, but the cost is a $54,000 increase. And so if you look at this other piece of paper, he has a little one-page summary of the funding for this project, where we stand. The DEP grant was $125 per covert, so we had $125 under that covert. $8,500 is already spent in engineering for the covert that's come out of that as funds, so leaving us 116.5. Capital raise at town meeting was 101, so leaving the remaining fund balance of 217.5. Cost to complete the project, the vidimut was 165.025. Added expense of 54.5, total needed to 19.525. Shorage, $2,025, and that would be paid for out of the professional services line, out of my professional services line. So that is where we are at. We ended up with one covert, or not one covert, we ended up with one structure. That's a, uh, managing engineer who states it's a much more robust product, but we end up with one crossing, and not two this year. We would resubmit that second one for this year's round, which is outbound, assuming they've approved it once, that they would approve again. But, uh, I guess I would need to know how the board wants to proceed.
Much choice.
This is, this is where we're at. This is Army Corps has really stepped up their criteria for approving these projects and...
Calvin, just for clarification, it's down to one, correct?
Yep.
And this one, there's some changes what is resulting in an expense of an additional $2,053, is that right?
No.
Additional... $2,025, excuse me.
Well, no, the 2,000, the additional expense to change from this, to change from the metal arch plate to the concrete new design that's required to give us the volume of water to go under that road with 20% extra capacity for debris is $54,500 to change that from a metal arch plate to a concrete, essentially, it's a bridge.
No, I, I see the, I see the $54.5. This says to me clear that you're short $2,025.
Correct.
So I guess I'm, I'm missing one. I'm missing, what am I missing?
Basically, you've got it, he's covering it with his professional line item services, so that we're not asking for any additional appropriations. But the public needs to understand, you're only getting one structure and not both of them for the dollars that we're pursuing.
I think I got it now. So what we're, what we're saying now is, the town is funded, correct me if I'm wrong, the town is funded two. We're going to allocate both of those monies, so this is one project, and then you're going to make up the difference of $2,050 from the line item of engineering costs, because those are coming in a little less. Now, I guess the question that I would pose is, how do we do that? Because it was two separate questions, if my memory serves me right.
I think it was one question on the email on the warrant.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about two different projects on that warrant.
No, they were, they were linked together as one. I don't know if you want to grab that.
I had to do the research.
That's fine. Well, I mean, is there something, how time sensitive is this?
Well, the work has to be done, the industry work has to be done between July 15th and September 30th, so it would be started, I guess, nothing we couldn't deal with next meeting, I guess.
But are we going to be able to do it this summer?
Yes.
You're doing this one this summer?
Yeah.
I thought from the story...
No, it couldn't do it, yeah. We can't, we can't do the other one.
We don't have the money to do both of them.
No, we don't, but...
Correct.
We could take the extra time and go down there and check for the lights and...
Let's just, instead of getting on to that, let's just deal with the one that is a question, because we've already know that we can't do both, okay? The question really lies is whether or not we can spend the money and allocate that money to merge into one, rather than telling the townspeople where our original intent was to do two, and now we've gone to one. That's really the question. As far as the Atlantic salmon, God bless them, very tasty, and I want them to flourish, but that's not really the problem at hand here.
May I suggest, it's very simple, you might outline the challenge, that the board of three members tonight authorize the works directed to proceed subject to the legal allocation from the town meeting. So we compare what the warrant article said, and if it simply combined both of those into one, then we're all set. If in fact it is two separate, we'll report that into your first June meeting.
I also had a question about the DEP grant money. I thought that came in two separate packages as well. I thought that the, and I thought it had an expiration date to it.
So they were two separate applications, and they were both approved, and with the warrant article, we asked, I believe...
No, but the problem is, you've got two different projects from the DEP that got allocated.
Has DEP signed off and said you can combine them into the one?
Did they?
Well, no, the DEP will take back that $125 from that second call.
The second call.
Yeah. Unless I can talk them into extending it another year, I mean, they extended it. We're already on our one-way extension.
That's why I asked.
Possibly, I understand. I understand that. There's a few facets to this that needs clarification. So for all intents and purposes, and really a little CYA here, let's, let's do our due diligence, let's get some of these questions answered, and then let's, let's bring this up at the next meeting if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. All right, so yeah, we've got the new code officer in, been working with him, transitioning things over to him, and he's in class, and he's doing today, but he should be back tomorrow, and my phone is ringing a lot less, so I'm able to get back to, just spend more time on this now, so... And then I think Mitch is going to talk about the, a few later, and I had issues in the family last week, and I had to work on this stuff, and I had a couple of days off, so I may get a chance to really dig into figuring out how can we rebudget to make things work, but I think the next meeting, I can have that put together.
Does anybody have any questions for Calvin?
Thank you.
Well, Calvin, I'd like to say thank you. We also want to say thank you for helping us with the code officer, especially with in-boarding and so forth, and keeping the town afloat while that position was vacant. Once again, we're a little bit of a gun to your service. We really appreciate it. So thank you very much for stepping in when we really need you.
Thanks, thank you, Calvin. Thank you to the crew as well. I've been hearing on the street, they're doing a really good job out there, all the work there.
Calvin, if possible, by the next meeting, somewhat like what the chief had outlined tonight, if you can somewhat forecast, not even forecast, but at least bring us up the data of where you are at in regards to a few discussions, and then how we look moving forward.
That's what I'd like to have done for tonight.
No, I understand, I understand the situation.
Get it for the next meeting, yeah.
I appreciate it, very appreciated.
Where they project for remaining needs and...
Thank you very much, Calvin. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Cal.
Okay, with that said, the item four is the Certified Ratio Declaration for Board Approval Signature Required of Majority. Are we just outlining here, or is there something that you would need us to do here?
There is a signature requirement. We are, from our assessor, we are required annually to report to the main revenue services what in fact our certified ratio declaration is. This form requires your signatures, and must be returned by June 1st. The state has certified a ratio of 2022 at 73%, to which we are allowed to adjust by 10%, resulting in a declared ratio of 80%. This ratio must be applied to all exemptions, personal property, CMP entry growth values. This information is specifically used by main revenue for our reimbursement of the homestead exemption. If you have any questions, please let, know Donna Hayes, our CMA assessor's agent, and I'll pass to you, so at the end of the evening when you sign off, this is what you have to do annually to go through it, some background information, and I think you're going to find that's what it is. What this may in fact be one of the elements that ultimately, as the chairman and members leads towards is the fact that pricing in the marketplace today versus what our assessed values are is widening. And ultimately, we have to do more than just simply do a mathematical upgrade, and that would be potentially a full-blown rebound. And I'm going to suggest that it be next year, but one of the things you might consider is probably every community in this state is waiting to see what the impacts would be post-COVID. We're not post-COVID yet, and secondly, they're starting to put money away for entry-level surveys, meaning you knock on the door and you go in and do an inspection as opposed to a windshield inspection only from the car itself.
We're doing a windshield inspection now.
That's correct. I believe we now allocate this year.
This year, but I, I can only suggest to you that...
Which would bring us up to date, correct? Which would bring us, that's the reason why we're doing that is to get to that, above that 80% mark.
Exactly.
Correct.
And you, you have a fluctuation of 10% below, which is 90%, or 10% above, which is 110%, and you are obviously too far below, which means you're falling behind.
Right.
And yes, this is a stopgap measure by doing what you're doing, but in the next few years, you're going to be probably facing a full-blown rebound, as will many of the communities because of this. Unless the market changes, and I'm not so sure people want to give up the value of their homes in the market today or tomorrow, for that matter.
They could afford it.
Yeah, that's part of what happens. We ran into this 08 too, right? I mean, it's, it's a very similar situation, and there's a lot of unknowns out there. But with that said, the town has been prepared for this for the last couple of years, and our, our assessor, Miss Donna Hayes, has provided us, and I believe the town approved it this year, if my memory serves me right, so we are on track. This is just to get us over the hump in the interim until that valuation can be done. So with that said, you need us to, or is this just something that we just need to sign?
There will be actions for you to sign, and that's the documentation, that's all you need from that tonight.
Just for clarification, we don't need an action as a forward on this.
I believe you should still, by formal motion, adopt and execute.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt and execute the Declaration for Board Approval for the Certified Ratio.
So, second that?
Uh, we have a second, all in favor. That's three, and just for everyone at home watching, if in fact there is a motion and only two out of us approve that, that motion will not pass, right? It has to be unanimous. The motion passes, thank you. Number five, Town Manager's Report.
Fairly lengthy, I beg your patience, I'll try to get through them real quickly. First and foremost, you need to understand that we are going to be sending out the letters that are due by statute, called the 30-day tax lien notices, and we will have them dated so that they become effective for the 30-day period from June 1st straight through. And this gives the property owners who are delinquent notice that they need to pay up, or it starts the sequence that ultimately could lead to the taking of the property, meaning I think we have a lien on the property which exceeds all other statutory liens, and if you end up taking the property for the value of the taxes, if you take the property, you have the ability to resell that. You also have the ability not to take the property, depending on what's on the property itself. Therefore, she is recommending that the select board vote to approve that any amount under $20 no longer be noticed and courted. This year, we have 11 parcels under $20 due to town for a total of $35.83. The cost to mail the certified letters to residents alone would cost $7.38 per letter plus staff time. It's not cost-effective, not unusual, and therefore, we are asking for a formal vote approving this policy effective 24th of May, 2022. Meaning, if Mitch Berkowitz's property still had $18 due to town, it's not worth sending the notice, which you have to send it to all, you just can't pick and choose. If it's under 20, and you've said that, you have the right to say, Mitch, we're not going any further.
Is there a reason why that we have a bunch of very small numbers?
It could be that they didn't give us the full amount when they made their tax payments, is probably the most, and then there's fees attached to it. So any number of small reasons, and interest rates as accruings, it sometimes just is not cost-effective to do that. Not unusual in towns and cities throughout the state, or states in New England. But in this case, 20 just seems to be perfect, because if it's $20.01, we're sending it. And it preserves your right to ultimately take the property if they fail to pay the taxes that are due.
Couple of things, Mitch. The first one is, I would assume most of this, like, when it's that small amount, we don't have any properties, this is kind of in a fluid town, we have any properties that have a tax bill of $20. So my assumption would be that some of this is because of they relate interest, et cetera. And by not notifying them, are we basically taking this $20 off the books? Or is it kind of making it, you know, write off this?
Again, it's a standard practice in municipality, especially large cities, where they're spending a lot more money to get a little bit...
What's the unintended consequence? That's my only, but I'm, I'm just, I don't have enough from the municipal government as you do. What is the unintended consequence of doing this? Because there seems like there possibly could be opening up to something.
In the few years that I've been in the business, the human behavior is, ah, I screwed the town.
Sure.
$20, if that makes them happy, good luck. But to go ahead and take, and do the 11 additional, in this case, it's a small number, but it's 11 properties, it's just not worth for the $35 you're going to get.
Can we add the $20 to their, to their tax bill?
Their future bill?
Yeah, I don't know why we can't roll that. We can.
It's because...
Because you're going to write it off, that's why you can't...
Well, no.
To do what he's prescribing, or what he's asking, we would be, we would be charging this off.
The 30-day notice is a Polaroid, is a Polaroid picture, a static picture at that moment in time of what was over the town. And someone may have come in and paid $19, or $1,900, and it was $1,925, but they only had $1,900, and they figured they'd be paying the rest of it. Well, if they did that within that one year, then we wouldn't be here talking about them tonight. But some people forget that last bit. So the unintended consequence is, we still sell, send bills out for the current year, and you'll more than make that up for the most part, especially when we're talking as little as $36.
Yeah, I, so we're about to have a discussion pretty soon on fees, right? I don't know, I, I guess I'm not feeling that comfortable with writing it off. I mean, why are we up a fee for that? Or make a $50 bill? I mean, I get it, people make a mistake, but, you know, this adds up. You start adding 500 houses, that's $10,000 a year the town doesn't get, because people make a mistake and don't know what to put on their checkbook or their bank doesn't pay it correctly.
That maybe.
Yeah, so the bank, it might be the bank making a issue.
And it's their argument with the bank. In all the towns that I've worked in, every one of them recognized that at a certain point, it's not cost-effective to proceed. And with the total number who get this notice, approximately between 85 and 110 people a year.
So I got a question, it's the same group of people.
Sometimes, sometimes it is, I did not do the analysis, nor did I think you wanted me to do the analysis of the number of property tax bills going.
So if we're talking about that many, it must be a very small amount.
Right now, the charge off is 11 houses.
It's 11 and 88.
11.
11. Oh, I'm sorry, you suck about 100 of the time.
There's insane, meaning under that threshold, they don't want. He's not saying we're not going after something that over $150 or $1,000.
My apologies, I...
It really simplifies as, the cost of doing business is more than what the debt is.
No, I, I get that.
So 11 times $7.38.
She's called 77 bucks.
Yeah.
It, it's going to be costing, out of your collection, more than what you're collecting back on those 11 properties. As long as it didn't get so obnoxiously, you know, who had $120, then it'd be...
And then is there any cost on the back end for writing it off? What's the downfall of doing that? How's that look on, I mean, what does that do to the person?
Well, if you have 11 people in the city all over $20, you're, you're missing $220 out of your annual that you expected for that.
Right, but what is that, what is that, what's that checkbox that the auditor needs to do that we're... Right, but what is that, what is that, what's that checkbox that the auditor needs to do that we're paying for on the other end?
If if you in turn anticipated one hundred thousand twenty-two dollars of tax collection, and you had to write off twenty-two dollars worth for this cost benefit, they just simply note it, and it's business practice. It's not a, under generally accepted accounting principles, it's a normal course of doing business in municipalities. If in fact you wrote off anything under a hundred dollars, I think you would raise the eyebrows of the auditor sufficiently to say, what are you doing? Pennies versus dollars. And I think every elected official struggles with, well, everyone else pays, why shouldn't they? And that's a reality, but on the other hand, we hear the taxpayers at town meeting, can't you be more cost-effective in doing what you do? So, where's the, where's the business practice and philosophy going on here? So, my recommendation is, this is a small bitter pill, but in comparison to what you will collect, it's really very little.
Mitch, are you looking for just this year, and these particular?
It's all you can improve it for this year.
Okay. So this is not.
You can, you have, annually, you can change that.
Okay.
If you. Or, yeah, and last year, I don't know if you would have, you had a lower number, but you did approve, I think, a smaller amount.
I don't recall.
The ladies had said something about ten and fifteen dollars, and anything greater than that.
I'm not saying we didn't.
Maybe it did come up this way.
I, it it might have been worded a little differently, I'm not a hundred percent, I don't remember this. Sometimes, things like this that are that, you know, you're talking about two hundred and twenty dollars on a, you know, um, it's not even around when you're really with it.
Actually, we're, you know, she did the analysis, there are eleven parcels that come to a total due of thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, that's what you're losing.
Okay, that's a little different than that was. Okay, so that's, that might have come up, so the question is, do we wanna waive thirty-five dollars and eighteen cents?
Which is based on the twenty dollars.
Cheaper than the labor itself, never mind the stamps, never mind, just Janet to finagle these letters and stamp them, and get them to the mailbox, et cetera, everybody sign it.
Seven dollars and thirty-eight cents per. That's the cost-effective issue.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna put the question out there. To set the minimal amount for collection, collection of tax liens at twenty dollars, or greater, or greater.
For for this year?
Yes, for this year.
Is there a second?
Okay, down a second, go ahead.
There is a second, we will move into discussion, any further discussion?
So this is only for this year, only for these eleven properties, for it will not tax year.
Twenty, twenty something.
For a total of?
Thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents.
So I guess I would, I would just add that and amend, Todd, you're welcome to do that, if you wanna amend your motion for a total of thirty dollars.
Thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, which is what we believe are the eleven. As amended.
As amended, uh, okay, all those in favor?
Now that was a tough decision.
I know, I think it just got a little eerie out of the gate, but I think everybody's, everybody's fine with thirty-five bucks.
If we find a batch more, I'm gonna let you know.
I know you will, that's why I was, I I think, my memory is, I do remember something that it wasn't a blanket thing, it was, it was an amount.
We run the list, and that's how she came to that number. That was the first item.
Okay.
The second item, please, Mr. IT, we know Devin and Kimberly are IT team.
Yes.
Each has their own specialty, and we've been able to now respond to one of the issues, and that is getting things up onto our website a little bit quicker, and be more informative to the public. And and I have to thank both of them for stepping in and doing this, and I think that we're heading in the right direction. We have noticed, and you have noticed, that when people are using our wifi in this building to also video record and then send it out, plus what we're trying to do, is a degradation of service. Uh, IT is, whether we like it or not, here to stay. And as you probably in your own business world and personal world know, that every thirty seconds, something new comes out on the market, and you've gotta keep up with it. We're still back at a point where the Model T is just reshaping itself. And one of the things that we have found out that we can do right now is change the upload and download speeds to something that may very well help us in the interim be more realistic, real-time, and effective for our public. And I'm gonna take the hit by saying that I pushed Devin to research this, and we found that with Comcast, who now changed the modem, that's the first thing we did, at no cost to us, I believe. We need to subscribe to a higher upload and download speed, whether we want to or not. Those pictures that are on, the content that's on, just chew up capacity very quickly. So we need a bigger motor and a pipeline, if you will. As a result of that, that for the remainder of this fiscal year, if you approve it, it's gonna go to a hundred and seventy-nine ninety-three.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four, I'm sorry. That's, I ran it off to a hundred and eighty dollars a month, that's twelve hundred and sixty dollars for this year's subscription. But that should begin to show right away, our abilities to be able to use some of the equipment that we have, while we're making the decisions of whether there'll be a special town meeting to use ARPA funds for the full upgrades that are necessary. I'm gonna stop there, because that's the extent of my knowledge, and ask Devin to finish it off, please.
Yeah, so what we're talking about right now is just internet speed upgrades. I know you guys are talking about September for the hardware-related things. So in the meantime, speaking with BK, uh, who's our IT services company, uh, they recommend for upload, which would be what we need for streaming, at least thirty megabits per second. The first tier of plans that I've spoken with Comcast that have that is the one that we are suggesting, and that also gives us three hundred megabits per second down. Now, this will help us here in the office, the ladies that work here every day will see faster speeds when they do their everyday jobs, um, they'll get through customers faster. Um, I know when whenever I come in, I would much rather do my work at home, because it's so much faster than doing it here. Um, so with that, we will have much better speeds here, as well as in September, when we also have new equipment at Eureka, we'll have enough bandwidth there and here, it covers both. But, any questions you have for me?
Okay, you're still talking about running wire from here to Eureka, or are you coming off the pole?
We are using something called air fiber, so it's like a satellite dish that will beam it from this building to Eureka.
So line of sight.
Line of sight, might have to cut down a tree or two, but available on that. But no trenches need to be done for that.
Like a heavy-duty router?
Yeah.
Big router?
Yeah.
So all the content where we're, um, running here, is on a server in the town hall, or the town website is located somewhere else?
The stuff that's on our website, as far as I'm aware, is stored through the Drupal, is the company that does the website. They have their own service that hosts.
So all the, all the town, so we're, okay, I just think, so we're upgrading it just so we have faster. Faster service, faster speed here. Um, and then if somebody happens to hop on during one of our meetings, is streaming something, then that'll suffice.
It won't, will cut into what we need to do.
Well, that'd be nice. I think the public will experience a better visitation to the website.
So that's what doesn't make, if a website isn't posted on site.
That has nothing to do with the public getting access to the website, that's why I was asking the question, yeah, sorry.
I think if someone was video recording.
That, 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 right, they go through our server here and uploading and streaming, then, um, yes, they would see a faster.
Cause we'd seen flutter right now with the existing system.
Well.
It depends on who's in the audience.
Right, but I, but also, so, do you, somebody's sitting here uploading, if somebody's watching in here, they're downloading too, which is here, three hundred, but if we're gonna slow speed right now, they're both gonna use the same pipe, and it's gonna slow everything down. All right, so, but if somebody outside is having issues seeing what's going on inside, it could be a problem in their own residence as well. They may need better download speeds, and it's not the town itself. So, I I don't mind doing this, first of all, it just, I I'm just, I just wanna clear up as to what the, what the speeds are gonna get everybody. I think getting the office running faster is the best thing that can come from this. The rest of it, as far as the streaming that goes on, i- i- it it doesn't work as well as, I mean, it's been helped. Um, but, um, that shouldn't be the 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 driving factor per se, it should be the the office work itself. But, you know, again, I don't know, not not against doing this, I think it's a good, good step. Um, I am concerned about the line of sight during a climate weather. So, you know, you could have a bad, bad day for any number of reasons, fog, uh, and different things. So I I don't, I don't know that, um, you could have some interference.
As far as I'm aware, BK, when they came over, they did a site walk with us to figure out what's the best course of action. They said that because the distance is not that great, we shouldn't see really any issue when it comes to weather. That's what they said, I don't know if that's the full truth or not.
So, so it's line of sight with, um, with light?
Yeah.
So, okay, so we got, all right, everything just needs to be located well.
Yeah, um, just to give you more clarification, right now.
Truck in front of it, it won't work.
I think you're gonna answer my question.
Right now, we, according to Comcast, are supposed to be getting sixteen down and five up.
That's slow.
Why?
Sixteen down, five up.
That's a little stuff.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
Five MBS?
Yes.
Wow.
Right. Yeah, I get that, I I just, you sure, I I'm I'm sure you're sure, but I, we, cause that, I don't think anything would even work here, that was.
Completely embarrassed.
Okay.
Most of what we do here only means down, but when it comes to streaming, it's all.
Streaming, but.
Our own streams are struggling.
Yeah. Okay, so also, the other question in regards, since we're talking numbers here, is what is our current plan cost? And what is this additional fee going to raise it to?
I never asked that question.
Okay, well, those things need to be taken, cause when this board met on this topic, especially regarding to the Eureka Center, the thought of the board was, and only cause I was wondering, I think, running up was, could be getting in contact with Comcast and have them look at both. Cause the original plan that was presented was us, uh, doing a trench out here and running basically our own fiber optic or whatever, we're running out there cat five or whatever to the Eureka, and our position was, can we get in touch with Comcast? Or whether our product is. Yes, and see about even providing a separate service, so they're separated, they're not, we're not, now we're, so my guess would be if we went with this satellite service in the future, which is not a cost that's incurred, but is a hundred and forty-eight dollars, there'd be an additional cost on top of that per month, to have this satellite downwind, correct?
I, it's, you just be thinking of the hardware, so one time.
There'd be a capital cost initially, and then that would be it, that we.
It would be a service.
So was the question posed to Comcast of what is the difference between putting their own, their own service in over at the Eureka Center?
If we do that, that would mean that, would you also want here to be upgraded in that scenario?
Well, you you may have to do that, I mean, this is kind of the, you know, this question was posed, correct me if I'm wrong, Devin, but originally, this question was posed because we were talking about getting service to the Eureka Center. Now, the question is, first, we need to upgrade here, because there was never really any concerns of upgrade because of people not being able to stream, or us not being able to stream, at least that I can recall. The 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 root of this concern was to get service to the Eureka Center.
Right.
So, we don't even know if this cost is gonna pacify that yet, because we're not even sure on the infrastructure cost that's gonna be needed for the satellite uplink, right?
Right. So, if we go with both, having both buildings have their own, we wouldn't be looking at the hundred and seventy-nine ninety-four.
Double.
Double.
I get that.
But, but that.
I get that, but it's, it's odd to me that it's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars additionally of what we're paying now.
Well, I I think, I think what the problem, the problem might be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the way it was explained to me is that the service we have is basically equivalent to somebody's house service at this point.
Well, my house service is greater than this, this is a house service.
Right, but that, I think you have a better service. Yeah, I I, well, I, well, I probably pay this hundred and seventy-nine or thereabouts for this same, the same up, up, upgrade here. But, um, I was gonna say, I thought though, that we were gonna go and look at a business package to encompass the Eureka Center in here, which does upgrade you automatically. And it gets you out of the two-router thing, which then becomes a double cost. I mean, I imagine that this hundred and seventy-nine dollars pays for internet, phone, and, uh, whatever, all the benefits you get, all the cable channels.
It's just internet.
That's just internet.
Just internet.
No, you're probably not paying down that hole for just internet.
No, I'm not, but it, but it is these.
But you understand, we already have a fee right now also.
I get it, I get it, I just.
From what I know about the current fee, from what Janet's been able to tell me, it's a, I don't have the, the thing in front of me, but it's around sixty dollars, it covers our cable, and we basically get the internet for free. It's deducted all of it, so.
But that's all we do in the old plan.
Yeah, you're getting structured like that.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a pretty big ongoing expense, I mean, it doesn't sound like much, it's a couple hundred bucks a month. Tight budget as it is already, we have unforeseen consequences with today's economy and so forth, so, um, at this point, I wouldn't feel comfortable with just three of us making that decision.
I agree.
So, let's move on from that particular, and then we'll, we'll bring that up at the next.
Anyway, business package.
Yeah, I believe, I thought my understanding was, is we were gonna approach Comcast and.
And leave BK out of it until.
And 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 a business, and, you know, maybe even, you know, it it depending on how, what the package looks like, you might do all three locations as town business. Four locations, I'm sorry, yes, county, yes, that's, I'm sorry. In in in, yeah, versus the individual manner which we do. You know, cause if I, I look at the upload, you know, even if it was sixty-eight bucks at all, four locations, that's still a lot of money per month.
Well, no, that's not even a hundred and seventy-eight dollars, that's just this location.
Right, but I still think you could have something a little different like that.
I don't know, I I think, I don't know what BK, I don't know what they're involved in, it's, it's nothing, like I said, I feel comfortable doing without the entire board.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I think this is one of those things that might induce more charges that we're not even aware of as of yet.
I'm just afraid when we get the board together, we're gonna come to the same conclusion that we need.
Well, I think we need to do, like the original board thought, is maybe get Comcast down, actually telling us what we have, what we're currently paying, et cetera. Et cetera, et cetera, what that entails, and then incorporate, whether it's the three, the four, the two, or just the one. And let's go from there and start from the grassroots of this and build it up from there, rather than just piling on top of something that we're not sure what we have.
And this is great stuff, so this is, this is exactly the beginning of where we need to start, so.
So, so you have added a new router, right?
We have a new.
Did that help?
Yeah. Yeah, it helped with, I don't know if you're paying it. And I, I haven't yet seen, I'll have to see after the meeting tonight to see if it's improved at all, our, um, stream. As far as I know, it's still running. But I'm thinking that that is part of the issue, however, with five up.
It's slow.
It's still not gonna be great.
No, no.
And if we in the future wanna have YouTube streaming, which was what was brought to me a while back.
Sure.
You're gonna want ten eighty.
Oh, yeah.
P resolution, so you're.
Absolutely.
Going up with speed requirements.
Geez, but we're gonna need to make up a little back for the ten eighty. No, that's great, I think it's great, I, I personally feel we should be starting with the ISP, the internet service provider. Before we go to our consultants and so forth, figure out what they can do, what we have, what their capabilities are here. Before we launch into our, um. Uh, partner with BEK, and let's just see what our, what, what the ISP provider can do.
I wonder if it's possible to get Comcast over here to talk to us.
Well, that's all they have to do, is that, it's just, you know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's different because you need to sit out, but they need to, we need to find out with the ISP of what we're actually got and, and go from there. I mean, we need to know those numbers too, what we have, what we're paying.
Are they a sole source strictly for this area again?
Yes, we, we have to use Comcast.
If we don't ask.
Infinity, whatever.
So if we don't ask, they're gonna charge us as much as they can.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if that's necessarily true.
Yeah, you don't know, I guess.
Well, I don't, I don't think Comcast has a, um, price based on per customer, I mean, they have a price of, do you need X amount of. Like Devin's explaining, what, what upload speeds do you need, that costs X, it's, there's no.
I already asked that question.
Sure.
I wanted to break up, because three hundred down would be great, we don't necessarily need that right now. But there's no tier level that gives us that thirty up until you get to that level. And I already asked if we should break it up when the lady I told you said. So, yeah.
Do they have somebody that, I mean, obviously you, you did some work with them, do they have somebody that maybe we should just say, what do we have? And what, because sometimes, if A, first of all, is that capable in this area, you've already called that out, right? Yeah, so, I mean, I, I just think we need a few more steps, and really, my biggest hesitation here is just, it's a lot of money. And it's a process, especially from, we're involved in the Eureka Center, et cetera, it really needs full board approval, at least in my opinion.
Oh, yeah.
But I think it's great what you've accomplished, but I just think it just, we need a little bit more boots on the ground before we come to a conclusion on this.
Let's see if we can get all four buildings in one package.
Yeah.
That'll be up to the board, let's just go that way, but let's just focus on what, what, what the task at hand is.
Alright, so to repeat, we will make contact with Comcast, try to determine what Tuesday night they'd be available. And basically, we wanna see what packaging they can do based on the four buildings, three buildings, two building, one building. What's the benefit to us and taxpayers to get a full package versus only service one building? And I, if, if I misunderstood, it's my fault, not theirs, because once they said, you don't have to dig a trench, we can shoot straight across, I said, we're now taking care of one of the problems.
But Mitch, I, the only, I agree with you, everything that you just said with the exception of, I don't think we necessarily need Comcast here for one of our meetings. They just need to relay what our options are to our IT department and yourself, and then you can relay that back to us, I don't think we need a representative.
Just a really easy matrix of, we do this, or do this, or do this, and.
Can we get a package?
Yeah, can we get a package?
And is it scalable, because I would think as time goes on, you're going to be necessarily growing again.
Yeah, those are always, those are all great questions, but I, I think that's what, that's why we, I think we need to start with the internet service provider, more so than BEK. Because we need to know what their capabilities are, what our infrastructure currently is, and move forward from there, and what makes the best sense from. For lack of better words, a business standpoint of how we receive, whether we incorporate this building, the building over there, or all four buildings is, that'll be up to the board at a later date. But for now, we just need to know what we have and what the capabilities are.
And the other thing I would say, I just looked it up, I'm three hundred down and ten up. There's not a lot of things that go up. Like you said, the download, they do mostly download here, so I can have upwards of six or seven devices going at any one time in my house. Between kids studying, streaming TVs at the same time, uh, us being on VPN networks into the business, both of us on VPNs, which uses a ton of bandwidth. And we don't have a big problem, so. I'm, I'm skeptical that we need to go and upgrade the thirty up. I, I, I get what, why, I guess, and, and that, because that's a cost driver right there, the three hundred down, they give me.
No, I understand that, you know, I don't wanna cut you off, but just to keep us moving, I don't wanna deliberate this tonight in this fold. Let's just move forward and get the information so the board can make a solid decision moving forward.
Any suggestions of what else we want to look at? Give some thought to it, and we can talk further.
Okay. Thanks.
But I would say that the two of them have done a good job, and be aware that we were just talking about our website itself. And although we found, we know that Drupal technically builds the web. We can't make certain adjustments. We don't know.
That'll be a discussion for another day.
Yeah.
Mr. Gardner, was there anything further that we can entertain you on tonight?
No.
Alright, we appreciate your time, and thank you so much for helping us.
Thank you, I'll go back to my broom closet.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
We'll put one bill in there.
Good experience for him.
Absolutely. Uh, next, Mitch.
Okay. GP Cog has some vacancies, and we have been invited to, to determine if we have anyone who's interested in, in fact. Being nominated to their board. So I bring it to your attention, I don't know if you've had this opportunity in the past, but we ought to seriously consider, do we want representation to GP Cog? And if so, how do we wanna select that representative?
If my memory serves me correctly, and Todd, you've been along just as long as I have, you have had an opportunity in the past. It's just, we have a hard enough time filling the boards in our specific towns, more so than trying to find volunteers for that. Now, if you wanted to put something on our website, or something that we're looking for volunteers for GP Cog. But I mean, it's, it's really hard for people, let's say for lack of better words, layman people out there saying, hey, they need a volunteer for X. Well, we don't really know what X is, we don't know what you're volunteering for, we'd love you to volunteer, but we have no idea what it entails. And that's what some of the issue has been in the past, we understand what GP Cog does for us as a municipality. Uh, unless there was a board member here that necessarily wanted to volunteer their services, we don't know what that time commitment is either typically. We have typically moved on from that mission.
Okay, because Ruth is off now, and Rob Ponto is off, that leaves Kevin Neto as your only representative.
That sounds fantastic, I would make a promotion if we knew Kevin. Yeah, I think, you see, that's, that's a great example though of like, both of those individuals, um, taking Kevin out of the equation. Rob had fantastic knowledge of what GP Cog actually is, as did Ruth, where most of the folks in town or people on this board don't necessarily understand what the commitment is or the. What the ask is really.
It, it's normal for a group like GP Cog to go back out to the people they serve and ask for representation.
Sure. Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
So, we will try to put a description together on the website and see if we have any nibbles.
Yeah, you can get Rob to do it. Thank you.
Alright, um, energy costs, we're basically in a standstill, we're not moving forward, uh, in any kind of contractual basis. Things are too volatile at this point.
No, understandable, I think we last left it that we would discuss this later on down the year. Okay, fantastic.
I put down here as a tickle, something for the board to keep in mind, and that is, if I understand correctly, we now have appointment of one of the two appeals board alternates. That each has been moved up, so we have a vacancy potentially. So you have to tell me how and when you want to proceed with looking for an alternate. To set in there just so that we don't get caught with only one alternate, but have two alternates to choose from when that vacancy occurs again as a regular board.
Sure, have we filled the vacancy, has one of our alternates accepted that role of being a permanent?
I believe Paul First was the individual, I'm not sure, I'm getting appeals board and Lanning.
No, you're right, you're right, it was, in the, if my memory serves me, the two alternates, um. Is Mr. First and Ms. Roy.
Ms. Roy, and he was, and Paul was the more experienced.
Paul was more senior, and the question that the appeals board was gonna get back to this board or yourself would be if, um, either one of them had an interest. Specifically Paul, he, he was the senior individual, do we know if he is maybe, um. A, do we know if he, except, I guess for lack of better words, if he wanted to take on that responsibility?
Paul did agree, I got it secondhand, that he did agree, he would step up to the plate. And that's why I'm saying you now have potential to vacancy as an alternate.
Okay, so perhaps I'm, I'm confused Mitch, I didn't know if you were looking for the board to appoint Paul as a. Permanent member of the appeals board.
I think you should, A, do that, and B, authorize the manager to accept applications for a alternate. Oh, there you go.
Do we have a motion, Todd?
I, I would vote, I would motion, uh, to appoint Paul First to the appeals board. And authorize the top manager to look for another alternate.
Is there a sound?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? In the vote? All three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I would like to beg the indulgence of our board to allow the historic commission their three minutes now, and then I can go on to other things after they're done.
So you wanna skip the five A of the historic, I thought we added them in?
Uh, you get them in and out, and that much quicker, I'd be glad to stop my commentary, get a breath of fresh air, and then I'll come back to you.
Nope, that's fine, it's just, the question was really, is it, is it a public comment, or is this added to the five A that you wanted to add to the historical society? Because if I add him as a public comment, we have a strict rule of three minutes.
I would say it's part of the manager's report. That way you, you can bring it in, and you can chew a day a little bit.
Okay.
But I still think that, uh, they need to recognize your parameters of time.
Right. So we'll, we'll treat it, I'll tell you what, there's two, hey, I'll tell you what, there's two minutes here, there's two of you here, so we'll treat it as public. But, you know, whoever's speaking will go a total of six minutes, um, and then Mitch can elaborate therefore after, okay? Does that sound fair? Let's get it. You're up.
Three minutes, give it up here.
And we don't start the clock to introduce yourself? And we'll be kind to you, trust me.
So, uh, my name is Lois Kelly Chesley, I live on Runaway Pond Road, and, um, I'm one of the people who's on the Durham Historic, Historic Commission.
And candid to set this on the historic district commission, one, one thirty-six, next to the Union Church.
And I'm next to the West Durham Methodist Church. Um, so, we just, as the commission, we wanted to make sure that the select board was understanding of what our role is. And what we think we perhaps need to change to. So right now, we have some responsibilities as the, as a commission, that when we talked with, um, George Thiberg.
Thiberg.
Um, we learned that we actually have some, um, liability in the decisions that we make as commission, as the commission. And so he and we spent a lot of time talking about what we need and what the town needs. So this is pretty much laid out for you in the letter, but, um. The main thing is that what we need to do is we need to, um. We need to change the role that we have if we can, and we, we understand that that's gonna have to be done through an ordinance change. Because, because it's, excuse me, because it's defined right now in the land use ordinance, and so. To make changes, we'll have to have a vote from the town to make, to make any diff, to make any changes to it, make it different. So. We're looking at the possibility of, of hoping that the town will make us into more of a committee. So that rather than making, um, policies, rather than making decisions on people's, um, property. And, um, having it lay entirely on us, along with, um, along with the codes officer. Then in fact, what we need to do is we need for it to become more of a town decision, and we would take on the role of an oversight committee, sort of. So, it's, it's laid out in this, and hopefully you have a chance to read the three pages, I know it's long. But, um, rather than go through it all, I think that if you have questions of us, we can answer the questions, um. We just wanna let you know what we're doing now and what we'd like to be doing.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think you hit the head on, the nail on the head there, when this, this to change the process in the town obviously requires a, a. A, a much bigger power than that at B. We don't have that already, obviously, um, but it's, you know, do you gentlemen have any questions?
I didn't have a chance to read it all through, because we've just got it. Are you, are you looking to expand the historic district to include Osgood, uh, Bagley House, and the Methodist Church, and Shiloh Temple?
So, one of the things we talked about was the possibility of doing away with the historic district. And having us have oversight over the ten pieces of property in town that are either on the national registry or are eligible for the national registry.
Five and five, I thought.
Five and five, correct, yes.
So, is that more in lines of what other towns do with the historic district, it sounds familiar to me.
So, yes, but, so, the towns that have either commissions or committees. Are not really similar to Durham. A lot of towns in, in Durham situation, their agricultural background, don't have anything to protect the historical pieces. When we start looking at Topsy, there's certainly a demographic difference, when we look at Castine. Where there's a beautiful process that their town uses, but it's not demographically the same as what Durham is. And so, it's hard to compare what other towns do to what Durham does, because we're sort of the outlier for agricultural and rural communities. And there are some, there are obviously some, but, um. So we, that would be one possibility, it's down the road, but I mean, it all has to come from the town. So it's down the road on whether or not the town wants us to, we'll say expand to the ten. And, and not just focus on the historic district, because the historic district doesn't even have all of the five on the registry, on the national registry, in the district.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes.
It took a lot for the parties to come together to find common ground, as I understand in discussions. And if you look at how the past, way back when, how was the historic property decided? It's a school building. Don't touch it. It's a church. Don't touch it. And things were created to save the memory.
Right.
But the continuity of a historic district was never really a district. It was everything that you tried to save and all of a sudden you've got things occurring and competing in the same district for different things. And from what I'm told, this is a, a better position for the committee, commission to become a committee as advisory so that they can get input. And what you're seeing is the coordination between the historic committee to be, the planner, comprehensive plan, and the code enforcement officer. And ultimately, how all that works together to preserve the values that you have in your community.
So you really changed, I know this is outside a little bit, but you actually changed the ordinances then to just, just have a set of guidelines for historic, I don't use so-called, for lack of a better word. And then, and then from there, without it being a district per se.
So on the second page of this, there are some bullets. And it says in an effort to simplify, it starts, that's where it starts.
Yeah.
That's section five fourteen, which is out of the land use ordinance.
Yep.
So though, that actually is layperson's terms. But someone who reads through it hopefully will be able to understand what is, what, what the requirements are. So for instance, the piece about stone walls, I have the second one down. Stone walls, granite posts, abutments, markers, over a hundred years cannot be torn down unless relocated. Cemeteries can't be disturbed. Those sorts of things, very clear. So right now, if I can use an example, right now, there is a town, there is a piece of property in town that's privately owned. It's one of the old schools. And there are different viewpoints in town on what should happen to that old school. So
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, unrelated from there, I think obviously this, first and foremost, thank you guys very much for this. But secondly, this is bigger than the three of us can tackle.
Yeah.
Obviously, we can maybe reconvene Mitch at a time where we can actually physically put them on the agenda. I know we added them today on five A, where we're going to have a full board presence because quite frankly, this seems like it's going to take a couple of board meetings, some input from other various groups in town. And then it sounds like a town vote before we could actually change something here. So I think this puts it on the radar, and I think that's great. Yeah, maybe we should get that. And then we can reconvene and rehash this further at a date later on when we have a full panel and see what.
Agreed. I was, when I heard that two people were going to be missing tonight, there was a question on whether or not we should either come tonight and try to present, but I thought it was important to get it out there and reduce ourselves.
No, I, I think it's good. I don't, I don't think, I think if the intent is, you know, I don't know what the intent, I, I, I get what you're getting at. And then if, if the, if the private property is the quote unquote push, for saying, I don't know if we can achieve this before it is finalized there. I just want to be clear there. Because this is going to take some time. This isn't going to be a wave of the hat by the select board.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it, so, may I continue? I know my three minutes is way up.
I gave you six, but because technically we, just so I don't run into this, or excuse me, Mr. David doesn't run into this in the future. We did add the historical society to our agenda tonight on five A.
Yes.
It's just the complexity of what is being brought before the board tonight really needs the attention of all five members to really push it forward. And that's that's where we're at with that. I give you, I'll give you a little bit of leeway here if you want to just.
I just want, the, the ordinance does state schools that are a hundred years old, so that was, I mean, that's why there's
Yeah, I think the issue.
The debate.
I think the issue there lies on when it becomes private property or whether or not it's still in town's property hands. I don't, I don't know enough about it and it's not really, as you know, that's not really in the preview of this board. That's really, and I even at this point, kind of kicking myself, we've been opening to the window. That's really another section of the town government that handles that type of stuff. We can act on what you're asking for the future.
Yep.
But what has transpired now or possibly transpiring, until we act on this in the future, or the town acts on this in the future, it's really nothing that this board could entertain at this point.
I would just add, as, as you'll see in here, that we were working with the Manusque Preservation Commission and with George for quite a while.
Yes.
And kind of ended up with George's suggestions. And there, on the second page, the one, two, three are the things that we were really asking to change. That to do away with the district to focus on the ten properties that the state has identified in our town. And to revise the five point one four anyway to, to look at. Right now, if, when you have a historic property, you're looking at fifteen hundred feet. And he's suggesting just the abutting properties, not going fifteen hundred feet. And, and then to revise the charter for us to be an advisory group.
You're talking about, but not just historic building, but any abutting land also?
It has to do with the abutting properties, what can be done.
Thank you. I'm not going to get into the semantics of this is all codes. This is, this is planning board and yield board stuff. It has, this is not the venue to, for lack of better words, litigate this, okay? Is there anything else you ladies wanted to add?
I have just one question or one, is there anything about the liability you mentioned in here? You don't have to answer, you just did yes or no.
I would say yes. It explains that there is.
Explain, explains liabilities.
It doesn't explain the liability, but it explains why we.
My suggestion is when we do have another, when we reconvene on this later, that that's well laid out as to what liability the board has today, your board has today versus what the town might take over by changing this, the comparison.
Yeah, I think it's always laid out.
And that's fine.
Again, this, again, this is not.
Nope, that's fine.
This is not the place. I do appreciate.
More of it, we felt you needed to know what was.
I'm sure there's a lot that you can tell.
Yeah, I think so.
It's just, it's just given the time constraints and really, it's, it needs to go through, it needs to be vetted through the proper channels. It doesn't necessarily start here.
Right.
Where does it start? Didn't find out.
Excuse me. I think it starts, I would start at, with the, George is a good starting point. And then reference that from there. It may go to the planning board, it may go through codes. And it might circle all the way back until it ends up on our desk. But it has to go through the proper channels before it comes to us.
We thought we were, so, okay.
Just an objective question. Was there an expectation of a particular town meeting year that you wanted to try to address this?
The next twenty, yeah, the twenty twenty.
So this, the purpose tonight, and my putting it on, was not to delay the understanding that with all of the discussions that you've outlined as chair tonight, you're absolutely right. But there is an expectation for some kind of community response at your next.
Well, I think as I illustrated and articulated, that's fine. We need to put it, when the entire board's here, I didn't say that it can go on next years or, you know, we can do this in a month, we can add it to an agenda. That would be your call, Mitch. We don't, we don't set our agenda. We'll be happy to hear. It just needs to be done in the right fashion and we at least should have the majority of our board here.
I think something else was to let you know is that we've talked about the possibility of having a meeting with the owners of some of those ten properties so that they know about this and possibly even, even with the owners of abutting properties. That the business of the abutting properties is already in the ordinances. That's not something that would, you know, but they need to know.
I don't think this board would ever stop you from, I, I think you're welcome to do that on your own accord, whether it's as a private citizen or within your group. And the more, for lack of better words, champions you get in the town, because everything is based off of the people of the town and the majority of the town and how they feel. And this won't be the five of us deciding what transpires here. This will, to what you're telling me and what you're laying out, this will go before the town.
Right.
That's the only folks that are going to have the authority to make that change.
Might be a good idea to put together a workshop with those people. And George and planning board.
Sally's?
All right.
Thank you very, very much.
Can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
I just used the term that I thought was on the manager's report. I have two questions to ask during the couple of comments.
Sure.
May I still do that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And is now the appropriate time or shall I wait?
Are we going to close five A? Are we, everybody's good for five A? Then we'll open it up for public comment for the, the second time. How's that?
Thank you.
We'll treat that as five A, so.
These are two questions. So the first.
Just a reminder.
Yes.
We have three minutes of public comment.
So the first question is, in, I believe, December of two thousand twenty-one, the board voted to have a committee put together for the Union Church. And I'm curious what the status is for that.
We would have to get back to you on that because I'm not, it's not ringing a bell. And because of all the, for, and this is not an excuse, it's just the reality of it. Because of all the changeover and turnover, et cetera, et cetera. That's a great question and we'll have to get back to it.
Okay, perfect. That's all I wanted. And then the second question I have is, if a person files an appeal on something that a codes officer has determined and submitted a permit, who does the appeal go to? To the codes officer or to the town manager? Or to the select board? I don't know who it goes to.
It never goes to the select board.
Okay.
We, in this town, we have, and we, and, and like we're here, we just appointed someone. We have what's called a board of appeals.
Right.
They would be the authority on that.
Okay, so I submitted an appeal.
Okay.
And Mitch was not here that day.
Okay.
And the codes officer took it. Because he said, you submit that to me, the new codes officer.
No, I didn't, I didn't address who you submitted it to. I just addressed who hears, who would hear.
So I gave it to the codes officer. I just want to make sure that it's in pipeline.
You gave it, may I ask which code? Because we've had two in the last couple of weeks.
Yes, it was, oh, the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean technically.
It was not Bob. I believe his name is Alan.
Okay, so you, so the newest code officer.
Yes.
Well, I said Bob, but I mean Calvin's been in term and now we just had Alan.
Oh, that's true, Calvin.
So I, we, excuse me, we can have Mitch do some research on that with Alan. And then we can get back to you.
Thanks, perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else here for public comment? Miss Heather Roy, come on down. Do you have three events at the time of your announcing who you are?
Yeah, I'm Heather Roy, seven 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 Palwell Road. I wanted to come down real quick. I was watching at home. And just to address the streaming thing. When I am streaming, I'm using my data. So I don't want you to like take that into consideration when you're discussing those details because when I'm streaming, I'm using my data to do that. I'm not using the town's Wi-Fi. And then the other thing was that I know that there's been a little bit of talk about a special, potentially a special town meeting. And I know that a little while back, a woman named Michelle came in and was talking about fireworks ordinance. And as we're getting closer to the Fourth of July, she had real concerns with the livestock in town. And so I was going to put out, because like we're saying in, in one of my recent emails to you, about how things only pass when the residents vote for them. And so I think it's really important to, to pull, for lack of a better word, the public or the residents to get their input for what they're going to vote for. I think that piggybacks on what they're, you're talking about tonight, right? Like, you're saying it needs to go through the proper channels. I, I wrote that email not too long ago about how I think the proper channel needs to start with the residents. And so back to the fireworks thing, I would like to put out a survey like I have done in the past to get a sense for what the residents would vote for in terms of the fireworks ordinance. But if that's not something that you guys are going to entertain, that takes me a lot of time to do that. So I don't necessarily, I'm not going to be offended if you say no, right? I just want to put the time and effort into that if that's not even on your radar.
Okay. You know, just, if, if you're looking for an answer, obviously, the, the board has entertained that. We just, we ran out of time at the end of the year before we could even present the question because it was, it was presented twice, once when I was not there and once later on. And we're very sympathetic, but we just didn't have the time to address it last year. Mitch can certainly add it. You can do, I mean, no one's going to stop anyone from doing anything on their own accord.
Would you, would you, would you find that data helpful as you try to make a decision about what you might put out? Like last time my survey garnered like a hundred responses. I mean, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean a hundreds.
A pretty good.
Of a town, I mean, it's.
Sample.
I don't want to say no, because I, I don't, I, I'm just an individual, okay? So I don't want to speak for myself. I mean, the board will take, I mean, the best thing on something like that when the board is having a decision on something of that nature is, believe it or not, my guess is that one, depending on the way that was written last time, it was very restrictive. And it needed a lot of cleanup before, at least before myself, and I'm speaking for myself here, would push something like that forward to the town. So I mean, it needs work. And if someone wants to champion and be the person to try to petition the town to go that route and bring it before the board and, I mean, obviously we wouldn't object to it. We'll listen to anybody, we can do it all the time.
Okay.
But what you do is.
Okay. I think, I mean, I think that what she's really asking for is very reasonable, not to like do a kind of ban or anything like that, but just to have like some set times or days or, you know, Saturdays or, you know, that type of thing. Just to see, like, put it out there, like, what would people actually vote for?
Yeah, I, that's, like I said, we, we could entertain that. I think, like I said, we ran out of time and there was a lot of restrictions and a lot of times on that. And quite frankly, as I'm sure you know, we have kind of a law in effect that you can't light these things off X amount of times and things like that. And because of the lack of response from the county and so forth, it's very hard when forced these things without someone locally onsite, boots on the ground.
Right.
Yeah, she wants to bring that back up to the board. I think the board, again, we apologize. We've had a lot of turnover and so forth.
Yeah, no, that, that's completely understandable.
It just hasn't been, we, we've been dealing with so much stuff since after town meeting and now we're in this crisis with gas pricing and things of that nature. And we have just so much on our plate that it's hard to get to. But we, we certainly welcome anything that any citizen wants to bring to the board and we'll entertain anything.
Okay, so the one other thing that I want to, yeah, I know. The one other thing that I want to talk about real quick with the internet thing is that I know that in some other towns, and I'm not sure if it's with it or not, but I know like Rob and Brunswick, they did this thing where they all bought into the solar, right? And so the, all the municipality buildings and, you know, that whole type of thing. So I don't know if there would be some sort of business package that would be worth looking at where even the businesses in Durham could partner with the town and all of that. Like people could sort of buy into some sort of package deal where businesses are joined together as like a co-op type situation.
With Comcast?
I don't know if they do it with Comcast or not. I'm just saying it might be more entertaining. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Oh, and I, and I sent some email right before and said, Paul's been an alternate longer than I have. So please to call to him. I don't know if anybody read it before the meeting, but.
We read it.
I didn't get it, but.
Okay. I did see that that was the decision, so.
Accent of what the board said, my recommendation was of the two, the senior should be the first to be elevated.
Right, yep.
And that's strictly what I did and just so happens that seemed to be where.
Okay, perfect. That was, that was what I was asking for you guys to do, so wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Done. Did a great job.
I may continue with the town manager's report when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Yes, at this time, we're going to close public comment. If I knew there was more of a report, we would have opened public comment. But we will reopen and go back to the town manager's report. Thought we were on five A next, but please proceed.
I apologize.
No problem. We're, we're all right. We're all waiting here tonight for the best we can, so bear with us, bear with us.
I think the chair and the group is, is handling it as that's thrown at you and dispensing it appropriately.
That's a good BS, but keep going, keep going.
Just to let you know, uh, the tax league notices, thirty day notices will be going out. They'll be dated June first and that'll be the thirty day period for which people who have been notified are put on notice accordingly. Uh, it's not something we like to do. It's a statutory requirement. I call your attention to the fact that we have received notification that the city of Auburn has requested that Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry review the municipal comprehensive plan amendment for consistency with Maine's Growth Management Act. There's more information available. If anyone is interested, please contact the county office. But they are asking for opinions and commentary.
The city of Auburn is looking at.
City of Auburn.
City of Auburn is looking at our comprehensive plan?
No, theirs.
Their.
And they're taking comments about their draft.
Huh. So they want input from the surrounding towns?
Right. Green, Lewiston, Minna, Dublaster, Poland, Turner.
And of course, Stern.
Hmm, that's interesting.
That is interesting.
I would say that's one of those things that we would, happy to give input if, you know, the planning board would like to participate in something like that, but it's really not.
Yeah, I'd say the planning board, and, and I only say that only because is there anything that they have coming up? And this is a comment to the planning board, anything that they have coming up up there that might affect our board in some way?
Yeah, I guess it's not.
With the.
Like, like.
Power line?
Like power lines or the, you know, maybe development around the town line or something.
I wonder if it has anything to do with the insurance department.
I think you're just, I think you're just looking for vague information and just trying to.
Just wanted to make you aware here, because I will turn it over to our planner and let the planner.
That's a great idea.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Accordingly.
Perfect.
That's cool.
Anything else, Mitch?
Um, Angeles, Golden County. The requirements of the county charters, again, time for coffee for the purpose of nominating budget committee members. So.
That has come across this desk every year in Italy. It's a, uh, perennial event. Um, and we never had to take or something like that one either. Uh, we'll be welcome, we can, that's another one of those things we're welcome to post and make it public and if someone wants to volunteer, so.
We'll give them the information and let them go direct.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm done.
I have a question if you don't mind, Mitch. I, I just, um, something that, um, did. Jessica and I were talking real quick the other day and, uh, she brought up, brought up a good point that I thought was actually a good idea that the board might consider is that during COVID, we voted, um, due to the fact that everybody couldn't have town meeting. Um, and, uh, didn't know if, um, you know, we had somewhere in the range, I wanna say about eleven hundred people or more voted and went to the polls for town meeting warrant articles versus, I believe, we had a hundred and fifty-six voters at town meeting the other day, a couple, a month ago or so. I'm just wondering if, um, you know, something that the board might wanna consider, something the larger board should probably consider is that when going to do some of these, these, we, we may wanna consider in the future, uh, putting these warrant articles out as a vote. Doesn't mean you have to do away with town meeting per se for the dialogue. You could do that ahead of time for the dialogue so that everybody gets their, their, their viewpoints out and their, um, and then have the vote follow town meeting as a poll item so that everybody can somewhat be educated. It's a thought. I thought it was a really good thought. Because of the numbers, you know, we, and it's just, it's just something I thought I'd bring up at this point.
You talked about allowing absentee voting and everything.
Yep.
This question's, yeah.
It, it, it's a, it's a bigger issue. I get it.
I understand it. Um, the question's been posed before.
Yep.
A few times here. Um, and it's, it's, the way it's been described in the past and obviously if our chairman was here to, I mean, he would, um, be able to articulate it a heck of a lot better than I could. Um, is, it's essentially a process for the town meeting, right? And it's the process that's in place. It's our form of government. So we can have separate warrant items, et cetera, off to a ballot. But then you have to have an actual vote and all that stuff and set up all these resources.
Right.
The town has always been, with the exception of the COVID year, the form of a town.
I understand that.
Form of government, so, um, I, it'd be hard to change that out at this point, but we can certainly talk about it. Kevin, like I said, would, I did a poor job there. Kevin would articulate it much better than I would be. Um, and there's some reasonings and some laws and so forth that, um, there's nothing wrong with putting something on a ballot. It's just, he, they, it alleviates itself in discussion, et cetera. The problem is if it's on a ballot, like you saw that happen this year at the town meeting is people sometimes change the question.
Yes.
So where that goes to, if people don't elect to take it, that means everybody has to vote that way.
Yep. No, I agree.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of issues with it. Like I said, if, uh, our chairman was here tonight and not, you know, me filling in, he could, he could certainly explain it a lot better than he has in the past, cuz this has come up. But, um, it is a great question. I agree with it, but I think you almost have to go a little complete.
Different.
But it gives, it doesn't give people the leeway of changing and there's no discussion if you vote that route.
It's black and white, but it's also a secret ballot, which for some people is less intimidating.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
No question.
Right. Thank you.
Do you want the manager's office to do anything at this time? Or do you want to repeat that with a full board discussion?
No, I think you probably just have a discussion for a board to see if there's any merit to going the next step, but.
I think, yeah, obviously we can entertain that. I mean, if you really want a discussion on it, it should be added to the agenda. Um, what I personally would do, cuz I, I've had this conversation, cuz I'm actually in agreement with Jess. We've all, a lot of us have had that conversation. When you see Kevin maybe before, you have to ask him and if your question's answered, so be it. If not, you wanna keep what, let's put it on an agenda, let's raise the flag.
Okay, so, huh.
Let's flag.
All right.
See if it gets me.
Okay. So Mitch, are you, uh, completed?
I just wanna make sure I don't forget this very important, and that's the request for a liquor license. I thought you said something about a liquor license.
Yeah, you added it together.
Five A, five A and five B, excuse me. Five A was historical, five B is the liquor license.
Correct. I just wanna make sure it's on there so that, uh, X, five C, uh, eight, eight C is where it, uh, I believe comes about.
Eight C was on that. Actually, Mike, I did have a question on that. In the past, we have had these on the consent agenda as it is because it's not, we're not granting a quote unquote liquor license.
It's a one day.
It's a one day use and a lot of times, if my memory serves, and I actually did reach out to the chairman on this one when I first saw it, and I think unless you have an objection to it, Mitch, I, unless you know something, I, I think it's okay where it's at on the consent agenda as is.
Okay.
Uh, if somebody wants to raise a question when we, um, pose to accept the consent agenda or wants to pull it out of the consent agenda, we can certainly do that, take it as a separate item. But I believe in the past, this isn't an atypical process for the AMVets to hold this. Uh, we've had weddings in town where this has been used. We've had, um, different social events, et cetera. Um, so it's to repeat, again, it's not a full-blown liquor license. It is for a one-day event, essentially a party. Um, and this is commonly where I think we've had it in the, in the past.
And, and, and again, it was more of a reminder to myself, I just wanna make sure that I didn't forget it because it's time sensitive.
Absolutely. No, we'll, 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 um, once we're, um, done with the, um, discussion of the town manager, we'll get into the consent agenda and if that's approved, then we'll go from there.
Perfect.
I think you're still up, Mitch, in regards to the discussion.
We have had lots of hits as I reported. And we now have five applications. So that this Thursday night, which is a special select board citizen staff meeting that we posted in advance, we, the chair will open the meeting and go immediately into executive session on personnel matters. That will be the extent of public coverage. They will have an opportunity to review the, uh, applications that we've received up to that point. And as you have prescribed, they will fulfill their duties to try to set them into three categories. Yes, no, and yes. And that is a personnel matter and if there's follow-up from that, we will follow the procedures that we established when I first arrived with your assistance to be able to bring you hopefully, fruitfully to a, a manager position. I will let you know that just in the last month and a half, I know of at least two more manager positions that are opening up in the state. It is, and they're just leaving. They're not moving to other locations other than to retire or I've had enough.
I understand.
It's a real difficult market out there. The other news is that we've had three applications all from Durham with a part-time deputy clerk, ten to twenty hours, depending on what the needs are. So the two staff members in the front office and myself, we'll invite them in and we're going to interview them on Wednesday. Excellent. And go through that.
That is awesome.
And then I will bring to you in executive session what my recommendation decision is rather than taking the full authority that the manager has to hire. I think it's only fair to keep you in the loop because I'm on the interim and you end up owning those kinds of decisions in the long run.
Ooh, that's nice. Can't pass the buck after you leave, right?
Of course.
Fantastic. Any, 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 any comments on Mitch's comments?
No, that's, that's good news, right?
Either. Yeah, keep up English cross, do an improvement Thursday.
Okay, fantastic. Um, consent agenda. Take a motion to accept the consent agenda as written. Any board member may request to have an item removed. Uh, if so be, to jump to the discussion as we just previously mentioned.
I move we approve the consent agenda as, as, as outlined.
And I'll second that. Is there a discussion? End of vote? Three zero. Thank you. Upcoming meetings and town news. Uh, Town Manager Hiring Committee meeting posted for May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M. at the town office. We are gonna reconvene our regular session tonight, uh, the Durham Select Board.
We're converging. I'll second that.
Uh, looking for a vote to reconvene.
Todd, Joe.
Yep.
Okay, yes.
It's three O.
Three zero. Now.
Pursuant to Article M R S A four zero five six A, we are gonna enter executive session for personnel matters. Could I have a motion for that, please? Make a motion.
So moved.
All in favor? We are now on executive session.
I make a motion that we adjourn the session.
All those in favor?
You didn't second. I'll second.
She's dropping, she's dropping like it did.
Rio took you adjourned. Thank you.